I think Walmart. And I think that those businesses drive just vehicle traffic, which we can't support. So it has to be destination businesses, but that is in a mixed use form where people are using both the commuter rail or coming like the college where they're driving into town on a Sunday afternoon and not leaving in their vehicles anyways until a Friday afternoon. So they're here all week. It's very limited traffic, their peak periods, but they're, you know, trying to find businesses even in the Spring Street area that helps to support the downtown, maybe flatten it out some more, not just concentrate uptown. But anyways, that's my few quick thoughts.
I got a couple of thoughts. Um, I got a pencil, so I'm taking notes on my phone, but you know, we talk about, you know, a vibrant downtown. So I think one of the things I would, um, let me take a step back. I appreciate everybody doing this tonight. Um, you know, I think I was one of those that called for having a workshop to talk about downtown. This is something we haven't done in 10 years collectively, and I think it's good that we're doing this. Um, you know, it's great that we've had other assistance groups and maybe we need to have assistance group, but but even if we have outcomes like these reports, there's no common, you know, direction that the council is thinking of right now. And there's a lot of different thoughts, you know, Frank has his thoughts, Matt has his thoughts, and others are going to have differing opinions. So I hope that this discussion maybe it spawns yet another discussion, but you know, come to some common understanding. So for example, you know, what is vibrant? You know, we all have our own impression of what a vibrant downtown means. To some, it means it's active until 5:00 PM and then we roll up the sidewalks, right? To others, it means that the nightlife starts at eight o'clock and goes till midnight with, you know, a party-like atmosphere. Um, and there's a lot of different variations. Um, the other question I've always had, when we talk about downtown or someone describes downtown, they're talking about the Common, right? They're not usually including Hale Street, Spring Street, Broad Street. And I think we need to look broader than that and really encompass all of Central Business District and think of the entire thing as downtown and not just focus on what are we doing about the Common because these reports have focused, what are we doing about the Common? We need to think about are there opportunities on Hale Street or Spring Street to do some of the things that Frank wants to do, which is maybe a destination for other people? Are there other opportunities down there? And then there's also the perception. Um, a lot of people when they're, you know, talking online or whatever say, oh, we've got so much vacancy. And that may have been true at one point. And I think in the years that I've been in Bridgewater, we've had a lot of diversity in properties. We had a bookstore at one point. We've got a flower shop that's still there. We've got other things. I, you can't see the scribble, but I walked around downtown and I, I marked down, because someone had said, oh, we've got a lot of vacancies, but we don't. But we also don't have a lot of opportunities because when you go through all the building structure that's on the Common, you've got the Congo Church. Nothing's going to happen there. You've got the Old Town Hall. That's going to be a special use, whatever it is. You've got the Mason's Lodge. No business is going in the Mason's Lodge. Um, yeah, there's an empty, empty corner of the apartment that the brick building that everybody knows of. Bank's not moving. The Jack Conway Building's not moving. The nail salon seems pretty active. So they're, they're a good vibrant business if you want to talk about vibrant businesses. And then on the, on the eastern side, um, you know, dwell eighty-five is probably occupying a space for, for a while. And my sister and I is empty, but other than that, everybody else has, has a business item going, um, right now. So as we go through the discussion, I want to also take into the thought process, what are the opportunities downtown? Is it just one building or is it a wider span than that? Thanks.
You know, I think that you need to have a reason for people to go downtown. And I, I, I think it's fair to say that during the day, it is vibrant. Like you said, during the day, you know, people are visiting those stores over there, whether it's the nail salon or getting their juice mill or buying their flowers or whatnot. For, you know, right now you have on a, when it, on a good night, and I didn't, I spoke my head in there today, but you've got Music Alley going on right now, which does draw maybe a hundred people. Now, if you look at the, the size of Music Alley, none of the buildings, my sister and I, or even the, the brick building that never had an occupant on the first floor, those two alone are not really even big enough to hold a hundred people inside if they were restaurants. But if there was like a restaurant, a night restaurant that opened at three and stayed open till nine. Um, not that you dictate what goes there, but wouldn't it be nice if that could have been again, a night out for people to go to Music Alley then? Or either have dinner or something afterwards. But I'd like to, I'd like to see a vibe, I'd like to see in 10 years more of a, I'm not going to say nightlife, I'm sorry, more of an after-five life, but not, you know, a midnight life, so to speak, um, with things. But I do think it's, I think exactly what, what Matt and Bill said, it, it, what happens outside the Common on Broad Street, on Hale Street and, um, and down by the, the gas station, uh, Summer Street. Those things need to be developed. And I think that if we have residents living down there, whether it's Perkins Foundry property, which I think is a good idea. I think that's a good idea on where it is, uh, where that's going to go. I'd like to see the Broad Street property be developed as it was proposed, as it's been approved, and I don't know where that is. Those are where your opportunities are. What's there now are our own. I believe the people are paying their taxes on the buildings. I'm sure that businesses have approached them. Why they can't seal a deal to get something in there, that's a business decision that the owners can have to make. But that's what I envision, Mike, for the downtown. I like, I like seeing after-five vibrancy, so to speak. So think of people to go there and stay for a few hours after five.
So along the lines of what Bill was saying, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't be adverse to sort of trying to provide some sort of incentive, whether it's zoning or, or, uh, you know, maybe some kind of grant program that would encourage development on, say, on the Hale, you know, spraying, you know, sort of not necessarily right in the downtown, but you'd be willing to sort of spread out.
Well, the fire station is a key, could be a key, a key element to this right near the Common, because that's right there. We know there's going to be something coming forward. And obviously the voters will have a say on that. But if the fires, the main fire station were to move out of there, now there's an opportunity there. And you have, you have parking behind there. And people need to understand that you can't always park in the front door. You might, you might have to walk a little bit and obviously make it more accessible to those that have, that have disabilities. And then I believe next to the fire station, you know, there's an opportunity there with that, that house that has been vacant for a while too. Again, we don't own it. It's owned by somebody. I'm sure they're paying their taxes and what they decide to do with the building, you know, is up to them. But if that's an opportunity for the town too. But the, the main thing I think is, you know, we have a proposal for Hale, for, for Perkins Foundry. That's in the works. We've been working for years with the Broad Street property. Hopefully that resurfaces. Um, we're trying to do something with the mobile station. We know there's a new fire, a fire station proposal coming. Those are all good, good things that would definitely help our downtown. We don't need to move the Common, I don't think. Um, I don't think we, I, I don't know the traffic flow. I was talking to Eric before we came in here. He was coming into the center of town from, from Roach Brothers, and he had a different experience than I did tonight. I came from twenty-eight from West Bridgewater. I stopped at the bank to get some cash for the weekend. And then I, I went around the Common, saw that Music Alley was getting going, and I had to go to CVS. And then I came out of CVS and came through. I really didn't have a problem. He had a little bit different experience, you know, coming up Broad Street, but I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things where it just takes a couple of light sequences to really screw things up. More a bad driver.
Well, that's the other thing I was going to bring up is, um, you know, a lot of our focus has been on business and buildings, but we've got to think about the traffic and the patterns, and we've had a couple of different traffic reports too.
We can get into those too.
Yeah, we'll get into that.
I think maybe, um, so, so for me, one of the interesting things is to Bill's point, businesses are coming in and out. And when they're in and you ask people how downtown is, they say it's horrible. When they're out, they say it's horrible. So I was trying to figure out, okay, like what is it that actually makes us think downtown is not good? And I think for me, and I think what ultimately I hear from people is when people drive into the downtown, that's their first impression of Bridgewater. And if you look around, it's not a great impression, right? It's abandoned. The buildings are ugly. And I think in a lot of towns, the downtown area is also where you celebrate your heritage, you know, your, your town pride activities happen there. And it's really difficult to do that on a Common with cars speeding around, right? So, so I think where, where you might want to have some sort of identity and be able to take pride in the area, it's difficult to do that with what we have. And so for me, I think that the goal we're trying to get to, one is safety. So I think the traffic stuff. But the other is just figure out a model where we aren't forcing people to make it look good. The market is trying to create an environment where people need to make it look good to compete for office space. And so for me, you know, I, I think it would be great to get more activity down there, but it's not because I want to see more people. It's because you need that market so that people are fixing up their, their office spaces and keeping it beautiful. And so my ultimate goal is actually a beautification effort and, and a safety effort.
So that's what we, that's what the town can do in order to sort of drive a market-driven.
Yeah, because I mean, we could try to attract one business, um, and maybe we make progress. We could try to fix one crosswalk and maybe we make progress. But I think we say, you know, if all of this thing, if all of this is one big system and the goal is get the system to work, you know, that means we need to fix the traffic pattern so that people don't avoid it. It means we need walkable space so that people can go into a store. You know, it means we need better safety so people aren't worried about their kids going down there on their own. It means the Common needs to be accessible for town activities so that you can celebrate town pride. And then ultimately for me, it means when someone drives through, they say, wow, this is a great place to live. Not like, man, this has a lot of abandoned buildings or unbe builtings, whatever. So I don't know. For, for me, ultimately it's the impression that that area gives drives everything else in this town, I think. And I'd love for it to be an awesome first impression.
And I would, and I would agree with that because when you look at a business like, um, the Greyhound Tavern and how much it cleaned up that end of the Common and downtown, he's done a fantastic job. And I, and I do think there's probably some simple steps. You go into some of these communities that have really nice downtowns. They've had strategies like, uh, I don't know if you've ever seen the crosswalks where it's actually sprayed brick. It's not real brick.
Yep, yeah.
And, you know, lining the sidewalks, just simple cosmetic things that could give the appearance that it's much nicer than it is. And to your point, certainly fixing things that are downtown, maybe installing, you know, the same. I know that we had talked years ago about trying to tie in even signage and lighting with BSU style so that when you're on the campus of BSU and you walk downtown, it, it almost feels like we're one and the same, which would be great. But things like, uh, the recycle barrels that they have out, we could do simple, cheap things that match that same sort of decor, I guess, or whatever you call it, but it would freshen up the downtown and do some simple cosmetic things to crosswalks and lighting. To your point, I think actually probably would go a long way to even somebody that potentially comes down to look or rent a space and says, wow, it's a nice downtown. I think I will try to, you know, sign a lease of a start of business in this vacant spot.
Yeah. It shows we're trying, I think. I mean, I, I love those ideas. Anything, the small little things we can do. And even, I think it's Falmouth actually, you know, they, during COVID, I think COVID drove it, but they ended up blocking off part of their street and they moved tables out there. So if you, and they put up lights, if you go down there at night, it's actually this incredible experience where you sort of walk through and experience the restaurants out on the street. Um, and then, you know, redesigned the street for it. They just said, hey, why don't we, why don't we experiment for a little while with this thing and see if it works? So I, I love the ideas that you're talking about. Let's, let's experiment. Let's see. Can we make it better? Can we attract new customers? Can we have people come down there?
So, um, Dennis mentioned the, the Music Alley and the hundred people. So I was there a few weeks ago with my wife Ellen. And they had a food truck, but it wasn't anything that we wanted. And they've had a food truck a number of times, which is a good thing, I think, but it doesn't help area businesses because they're bringing a business in for that particular event, which is fine, which is fine. But we ended up going down to Greyhound. So Greyhound was a benefactor, uh, or beneficiary of, of us attending Music Alley because we would not have gone to Greyhound. And we saw two other couples that had been listening to the music i- in the restaurant too. So there are side effects of, of things like Music Alley, which are very positive. Um, but there's nothing in the immediate area if you're not getting off the, you know, getting something from the taco truck or whatever's there that week that you can, you know, pick up easily, you know, Restoration Coffee. I don't even know if they're open that late.
Five o'clock.
Yeah, some other things. And, and, um, while I'm explaining, so Ellen works over at BSU at Boyd and Hall. And one of her chief complaints right now is there's no place to get lunch. So she can't go to Restoration Coffee because there's so specialized, the line light gets too long. She would consume her whole, you know, lunch hour. Um, you know, uh, the, um, Summer Street Cafe is fine, it's a little further to walk. To go further than that, you're, you're chewing up your entire lunchtime just going and coming back from location. There's nothing close to BSU. So if we want something that BSU is attracted to, you got to think about what products like food and other things, you, you want to draw the kids off the campus.
Yeah. And I think if we want to attract restaurants, one thing we could do is have a food truck day, right? Let's bring evidence to these restaurants to say, listen, we put out ten food trucks and the whole town showed up. So there's demand there. Or we, we had a taste of Bridgewater night down there and, you know, and all the different restaurants kind of participated. Um, I think that's if we have evidence that we can bring to these businesses to say that there's demand there and we're doing things like cleaning up the crosswalks and trying to create that atmosphere. I think that's a much easier attract or way to sell our town than us just saying we have an empty space, you know, we need a restaurant. Um, so I'd, I'd love to see us kind of get creative with the easy things, experiments.
Create a little more of an atmosphere.
Yeah, and just figure out what works in Bridgewater. Just try them out.
Yeah.
I also think that too, um, you know, on the town side, that, you know, we should really treat proposals, uh, with a white glove approach, um, and some major handholding. And I'm not sure what the pickups are to any business coming into town. You know, I've heard rumblings of course, but you know, I take it for whatever it's worth. But, you know, maybe when a project, um, comes before the town that is in this downtown district that we decide we're going to go above and beyond and, and we'll be the one pushing and driving the meetings and the progress in order to show that as a community, we're really invested from, you know, from, from town government trying to help them through every step of the process so that it becomes a viable project and, and a window that's feasible to a developer. And it seems like when you look at like the Broad Street project, you know, I, I don't know how anybody goes through what they've been through and they're still at the table trying to get this developed. And it, and it's really unfortunate because, you know, listening to people in town, I, I only hear sort of the most bizarrest of comments like, you know, what's clapboard and what's that type of shingle? And I want the pitch of the roof to be like this. Well, that's not really your role.
Right.
I, I think the community itself has to come to the realization that this is the nineteen, not the nineteen forties, sixties and seventies. And that every, every once in a while, the town's going to look different, you know, from an industrial age to, as we were just talking about, this industrial property downtown in 2021, is that really something that's viable in the future anymore? I don't think so. And I think we do have some residents in town that are very outspoken who just don't want to see the town change from what it was. What it was, I don't know. Because I've been here for 20 years and it's rapidly evolved in that 20-year span. Uh, look at the expansion of the college, what's changed downtown, 104 Ellen Street. If we had that philosophy, none of that would have happened. Um, and I think we need to get over that and, um, and really just help support even you and, and town staff in that role of defending some of the projects as they move through the process and they're sitting in planning board hearings. You know, we as councilors need to be in there supporting the project and not letting two or three naysayers show up to those meetings and really frankly derail projects in my opinion. And it's quite frustrating. I imagine it's for somebody that's working full-time on stuff.
And that's, I mean, that's a great point, Matt, because I think that's kind of partly why we're here is, is exactly that. We, you know, Jennifer and I and Kim and Tony and, and Azu, all, we want to kind of get, you know, what you're thinking. Um, and, and this is the great forum to do it because it's a much easier free flow of, of, of information, free flow of, of ideas. So I definitely appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
A number of years ago, I served on a committee who went to six different towns to see what they had done. But back then they had grant money, tax incentives and very low interest loans for the individuals to redo their facades and get their buildings looking nice. And we saw some, in fact, I had, somewhere in my house, I still have the box of all the work that they had done. They had given us all these brochures showing the before and after and everything else. And that's the kind of thing that they said, without this, we would have gone nowhere because you can't say to a property owner, your building looks like crap. Fix it. Hello, I own it.
And you're, you're absolutely right. And, and I could tell you that we've basically done that, you know, not having, you know, too many tools in our tool chest. We've actually gone to property owners and said, you know, can you just do something? You know, it looks terrible. Can you do something? Um, and the answer has been exactly what you said, you know, exactly what you said. So that's a good, that's a good point.
But it's those three things that everyone, every town that we went to had that same thing. They had those three things. They had the three points that this is how we are going to help you to improve the looks of your building. And they did some fantastic jobs.
So I also encourage everybody in the room to take a walk behind the, uh, florist shop, stand in the middle of the parking lot and try and figure it out. I, I've done that a couple of times. It's impossible. So imagine you, you're coming from someplace else, you're new to town and you're, and you want to go to, you know, um, you know, check out the, you know, whatever, uh, shop, right? That lot is so broken up into segments. You've got the fire station here. You've got residential parking there. You've got a sign that said only permitted parking, and yet it looks like regular parking. You've got the parking next to the, so that's our premier parking area. And I've always raised parking as the biggest issue, biggest impediment to our downtown. Because if you go into those other communities, Frank, that you were probably discussing, there's probably really nice municipal parking just off the center. And you find that in a lot of places. You find that in Falmouth. You find that in, you know, when I was visiting Virginia, they had a beautiful, you know, three, three, um, really or two block area with restaurants and pedestrian areas, and all the parking was outside. And so it was really easy for us to find a parking space, then take a two-minute walk to get into this interior place where they had shops and, and food places and other stuff. And, you know, if I lived in that area, I would probably go frequently to that, that type of thing. But here, I was trying to get a TV over to the computer place to have them take a look at it. I had to circle the, you know, the, the Common three times before I found a space where I didn't have to lug it a quarter mile across, you know, two lanes of traffic.
And Bill, that would tie into, you know, what Eric was talking about before about, you know, tying in all that signage and everything, you know, I think about Krispies. You know, unless you knew that, that people were using that lot, that dirt lot, you know, maybe something as a simple municipal sign, you know, a nice looking sign that says the lot's available, you know, maybe people would just keep driving by Krispies that can, there's no parking out front. Where am I supposed to park?
Well, that's the other challenge is we don't own that lot.
Yeah.
They don't own that lot. It's an MBTA lot. So, you know, they're allowed to use it, but it's not their property to use. And, and I understand that they do maintenance on it, you know, because it makes sense to be in that, you know.
So, so going back, I'll just inject myself once, going back to Bill's comment about the parking lot back there, and it is, it's, it's fragmented. It's like just sort of, you know, when you look at the assessor's map and you look at what the town owns, you know, it's just a big old weird shaped lot that we pack parking into. But one of the things that we did, uh, probably well over a year ago, well, yeah, it was over a year, so year and a half ago, uh, we invited a couple of developers to come down, um, through contacts that we'd made and just give us some advice. And, and one of the first things that all, both of them, the two of them, both of them said, they looked at the buildings on that east side of Central Square and they said, those are, you know, that's great property. That's great potential there for mixed use, you know, commercial on the first floor and then residential on the upper floors or whatever. And they didn't talk about renovate versus new build. Didn't, that wasn't part of the equation. The first thing they said is, do you have a parking ordinance in your town? I said, of course we do. They said, well, those buildings will never get developed because you don't have the ability. They don't have the ability to put parking on their property. And we require certain parking, as we all know now, certain parking requirements in our downtown area. They don't have the square footage to put parking. One of them can squeeze like, you know, a couple of cars in, but certainly not enough to, to justify, um, you know, multiple units above storefronts, um, that, that would require whatever, 10 parking spaces, 12, excuse me, 12 parking spaces, 14, 18. So, so that kind of a little light went off in my head and I thought, well, you know, we have property, um, probably just shy of enough, but we have property there. You know, is there a way for us to develop some sort of parking? Um, you know, parking garage, not, not a humongous edifice, but a, a parking garage enough so that we can supply the parking needs for, for those buildings that front on the east side of Central Square so that it provides that private incentive for them to redevelop their, their property. And that's, you know, so that's kind of one of the ideas I'm sort of throwing out here, you know, is that, you know, is that something that the council would entertain? Because it's, it's, it's an investment, you know, I've talked with the university about doing that kind of investment through, um, you know, the state actually has a state university parking garage authority, um, which I didn't know. Um, but would we be willing to do a joint venture there so that university gets some parking, we get some public parking? And we have parking that we could then sell or lease to these, um, places on Central Square so that they would have, um, you know, an incentive or it makes their properties more attractive for redevelopment. So like, would the, uh, the square footage of the existing main fire station provide any opportunity for that kind of a development? And I'm just going by what these guys said, just pacing it out. I mean, it was hardly a formal exercise, but um, that property, you know, certainly would hurt, but, but really there, they need about 20 more feet on one side or other of that, of that existing lot in order to make it wide enough to support the parking, you know. People, people know more about parking than I do, the footage needed, but, but really there's a little bit more footage needed on one side. Um, but after that, you could, you know, do sort of a subsurface level and one and maybe two. And you would never see it from either School Street, Central Square, um, Summer Street. But, but it would provide, you know, at least three, if not four times the amount of parking that we currently have. And it's, and it would be a commodity. We could, we could, you know, sort of monetize that, but we could, you know, sell it to those developers or lease it to, to those developer, developers that might be interested in redevelopment on that side of the street.
Well, I, I would agree insofar as, you know, when I, the small town downtowns that I like to visit, uh, you know, I mean, I think about places like Salem, like Plymouth, uh, like Easton. And the availability of parking is obviously going to be the incentive that gets me to go there. And, you know, I know that, uh, you know, Plymouth has some downtown, uh, street level lots, um, that are very, uh, they're very well situated for, uh, the downtown traffic. I mean, I, you know, Salem's got lots of things going on that work out well as far as parking. Uh, but, you know, I think that parking's got to be a, a really critical piece of the infrastructure for us to, you know, really go forward.
The other challenge with parking, and we see this with the new boatyards, is that a lot of the buildings in our central business district are non-conformant. So, you know, there's a hundred, hundred-seat restaurant going into a building that has 22 spaces and five of those are reserved for the five apartments above, which is, which is undersized for, even for the residential. So to have, you know, they may have this great Mexican restaurant or whatever it's going to be, you know, that people want to come to. But someone from out of town is going to come here once and say, not again, because, you know, they're, they're going to try to park in Walgreens, which may be fine until they get caught, you know? Walgreens, uh, they used to, if you had a backpack and you headed the other way, your car was towed in like a minute and a half. You know, and, and that brings us back to, Michael, you remember, um, I don't know what report it's in or I'm sure it was in a report, not, not discussion item. One of the consultants talked about shared park. And we've, we've talked about this a little bit. Walgreens in particular has, you know, 40% of the lot open at any given point in time. But you can't park there unless you go into Walgreens. And I used to say, you can't park at Walgreens and go to De Angelis for a sandwich. You can't park at De Angelis and go across the street and get a tattoo because it's not shared at all. It's, and, and, you know, we need to figure out a way. The consultant said, oh, just work with the businesses and the owners and, you know, just make it shared. Like it, you know, it could be done on a Saturday. It's a, I, I talked, I actually talked to one business owner about doing that. It's a, I, I talked, I actually talked to one business owner about doing that. They have a lot of extra empty spaces, but they also have a requirement for relocation if one of their other sites has an emergency and they need to leave that parking empty. So it looks like it's empty, but it actually has a purpose, right? And, um, so I think, you know, a parking garage would be a great idea, add extra space in there. The signage has to fit it. You have to think of someone coming from outside of town, you know, what's their impression you're going to be? Is it easy to find the parking? Is it easy to find the restaurant? Is it easy to find, get around town without having to know that you go through the CVS lot to go over to Cedar Street, to go over to grocery, to get out on Broad Street? Yeah, yeah, on, on Pepper Street.
I'm, I'm, I'm a little cautious of a garage, simply because I don't see the problem with parking downtown, because there's nothing there to go to right now. I mean, that during the day, if you say you had a little difficult time returning a TV, um, but you know, to build a garage for people to come to, well, what's there to come to? If people are going to come to a parking garage after five o'clock to go to a show, to go to a ballgame, maybe go to Music Alley or go to dinner. Right now, there, there's not a lot of that for them to drive to now. For the people that live there, that do have apartments above it, I don't know what the numbers are right now, and I don't know what a developer would do to punch it out and make it a lot of, um, living like they used to be in the days, but I don't know if a parking garage is really a good fit for, for right there, I mean, there is parking. You just really got to look for it, if you know where it is. I mean, even School Street, I bet right now there's not one car on School Street. I mean, there's parking on both sides.
It's probably a chicken and egg thing, parking and.
Yeah. Guess what?
venues, it's a chicken and egg, I mean, there's, you know, there's the destination, then there's the parking.
But if somebody said they're going to open up a hundred-seat restaurant, they come to Michael and say, we want to open up a hundred-seat restaurant, we'll work on that part, you work on the parking, then I can see, okay, now let's get to work. But you just put a garage up, and I'm like, okay.
But then they will come.
Yeah, one of the challenges.
This really is, I think, a self-abilling prophecy, if you do build it, they will come, because then, then it's viable.
Yeah.
You know, then it's, it's a practical matter.
It's an impediment removed.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I think that's.
Sense of it.
That's the challenge, is the market conditions in Bridgewater don't attract the businesses that will pull people in, like, the market conditions just aren't there. And if we wait for someone else to fix them, we'll have the same meeting next year and try to figure out what to do. So I, I feel, I don't know if the parking garage is the right first step for us, but I, I like the idea personally, but I think we do need to think about, what are the ways we can change the environment to create the chicken, so that we get the egg, right? I mean, we, we have to put a bet somewhere, I think, and I know that's the purpose of this.
Yes, and the downtown, the downtown as we, or as history shows it, all downtowns have changed, our downtown is now becoming the Broad Street area down towards the train tracks. That is where there's more activity with the supermarket, um, there's the box, a few stores down in that area, I think, I think the Napa thing is sold, I don't know what's going in there. But it seems like, you know, all downtowns have shifted a little bit away from the traditional downtown, so our common area, our, our common area is probably always going to be these smaller mom-and-pop shops that might last three or four years or might last forty years, they'll come and go. But I think there is certainly room for improvement there to make it look nicer, and you know, antique shops used to be the big thing, now they're, they're kind of, I don't know what's happened to them.
But McDonald's is vibrant too.
The Common is a three-minute walk from Broad Street, so it's not as though it's a great expand, so you could, you could really consider them one area.
Sure, yeah.
But it is, I, I know, I sort of understand what you're saying, because there are little pockets, and that's one of the things we were actually going to, you know, think about talking about, is, you know, you've got little pockets. You've got Spring Street as a pocket, you've got, you know, the Common sort of is a pocket, and, and, um, you know, then Broad Street is a pocket, Main Street's a pocket, and, and is it, you know, it's probably not something we want to do, I don't think, but, you know, is there a space for us to be sort of targeting different areas with different types of zoning, so that we get the kind of development that we really want? If we really want, you know, some kind of resident, true mixed-use residential commercial, like right around the Common, is it worth it to zone the Common something different? Right now, it's all zoned the same, so, but is it worth it to zone the Common something different than down on Broad Street, you know, the Perkins property, or is it different, you know, Main Street? If, do we want to zone something different on Main Street or, or Tomer or Plymouth or?
Because no one's, I've, I've heard very, I haven't heard any complaints, so maybe some of you can tell me if you've heard, about Music Alley, when, when they're busy, I don't hear any complaints about, I'm not going to Music Alley, I can't find a place to park, I never hear that.
Well, it's because they parked over here in the library, which is closed.
Well, that's what I mean, and I think that the, the vibrancy that we want to develop downtown to me is more after hour, after five o'clock.
Right.
Because I do think there's the, the vibrancy is there during the day, and whether they can get a lunch sandwich or not, that, that's just the, the trend in the month, there'll be a sandwich shop someday in this downtown area, I'm sure, but right now there isn't one, but I, I think that, I think if we could take the Old Town Hall and have, you know, do something on the, in there as far as having exhibits or, you know, three or four times a month, if, if there was like a hundred people going in there with, with Music Alley being a summertime event, I think if businesses see that there's those types of activities, and like, hey, those people have nowhere to go afterwards, I think I'll invest in a restaurant or something close to that, to that venue.
But you bring up a great point, because here's, here's the thing we have to get into. Like, is the library lot a municipal lot? It, it belongs to the library. A lot of people, because I paid attention the night I went and listened to conversations about where people were parking, and a lot of people park over here. There was no activity at the library at the time. But let's say the library was hosting, you know, a program in this room and needed the hundred spots or whatever is outside. You know, then you've got a competition. Or during the day, you know, should we allow a sandwich shop to say, well, just park in the, in the library lot, because there's plenty of parking there? So, you know, do we create our own shared use by saying, you know, this is open?
I mean, one other thought here, we're not the first town to run into this, right? And so I think everyone's probably looked at their own studies, but there's one, I have one in front of me on, from American Planning Association, and Brookings did one too. There seems to be a recipe for this, which starts actually with the white glove treatment and finding a development partner who's willing to invest in an area that isn't quite there yet. And then from there, you create the density that can keep the restaurant in business when, you know, four performances aren't happening, the other, you know, sort of like six days a week. So I, I feel like there's probably some benefit for us to try to look at what other towns have done, I think to Frank's earlier point. And the recipe maybe that is starting to form around that and see if there's something we can follow there. And I do think in all of them, there is this idea of the town finding a development partner and investing in the first step, and doing the little things, and making it the sort of place that businesses then come to.
Yeah, I mean, I think an important part of.
Yeah, it did turn out well.
No.
So, I mean, well, let's talk about that, it didn't work, why didn't it work?
I think it's also important for the municipality to create the conditions where private capital flourish and get a return. We're not, we're generally really hesitant to do that.
And that's why the Broad Street, the Broad Street project was that, right? I mean, that's.
That's what I'm telling.
Yeah.
That was super.
But everything in the Common is owned, right? It's not, I mean, I mean, I don't know. Yeah, everyone, it's all owned, it's not like there's a developer that owns that, they're all owned by, I'm not going to say they're very, I'm not going to say, they're probably not deep-pocket people that own those buildings that are just waiting for us to reach out to them to say, why don't you, you know, put thirty apartments above your store, I don't think that.
So, so the, the extreme of Eric's point is I think it's Glaspero, New Jersey, where Rowan University is, and the town worked with the university, um, which is a public university as far as I know. And they, they identified an area as a blighted community, um, a lot of, you know, kind of low-end rental homes, um, in poor repair. And the town identified an area that it wanted to redevelop, and it was a pretty expansive area, quite frankly. And they identified, I think it was three hundred properties. And they said, we are willing to come in, take these three hundred property, obviously they were working with a, a developer, a sizable developer and the university, they said, well, we're willing to take these three hundred properties, um, in order to build this. And the this that they wanted to build, I'm not suggesting for a second that we want to do that in Bridgewater, because it was, it was a substantial development. But the point being that the town sort of took that step, they ended up taking none of them by eminent domain, because every single property owner ended up selling to the, to the town, to the development company. The, the university, private, uh, public university, not a taxable entity, so, um, the town was very specific, said, no, we will not, uh, we don't want the university to own this project, because it takes it right off the tax rolls. You know, yes, it builds up some vibrancy downtown, but it takes the properties right off the tax rolls, so we're not going to do that. So what they ended up with was, um, a private development, a lot of private development. But the university leasing some dorm space in the same building with, um, residential condo development, same building with office space, which I think mostly was used by the university, and then, uh, retail, uh, restaurants, you know, nightlife, kind of sports, uh, I think there was a sports equipment store, that kind of stuff on, on sort of the ground level, but, but it was a, it was a really sizable property, but I think that's, that's the kind of, um, on a completely different scale, that's the kind of thing that we'd be willing to do, is go find a developer that's interested, um, in Bridgewater and understands what we want to accomplish, um, and then it may come, we may have to take a first step. We may have to say, you know what, if we've got an intransigent, um, landlord, property owner who doesn't, isn't interested in doing anything with our property, it may come to the council saying, at least saying, we're willing to take that by eminent domain. You know, and then see, see where that process goes. And that's, that is the extreme example, if you look it up, but, but, but it's, it was very educational for me, because I got to see that interaction between the developer, the university and the town, and it was, it was a three-party agreement, so to speak, and they were able to accomplish, they really accomplished a lot. Again, more than we would ever want, but they did. So, all right. So, so what I might take away is I think that we here, parking is an issue. So if we can come up with a way to, to resolve, excuse me, resolve some parking issues, um, that would be good. We didn't really talk too much about, you know, the commercial versus the residential balance. And I don't know if anybody has any strong feelings about that, or if we're comfortable with what we have and just try to leverage that.
I mean, I, again, to that recipe, if you believe the studies, you need the, you need the residential density to support those businesses while these events aren't happening. And so I think all of the places I've heard about that are successful have the mixed use. So I would, I personally would be in favor of finding ways to bring the right residential density into that, to that area.
But in the same token, we did this whole big re-zoning. We set the standards. Now we have people coming in and say, I want to build a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy houses, how about units? But I only want fifteen percent, I don't want thirty percent. Are we driving businesses away, that's the potential, new businesses in the area? In my mind, that's it, you set a standard, that guy up the street, he had to live by the standard or go. This guy down the street, and I've had a couple of people say to me, Frank, he was going to build sixty-four units there, he's going to build a hundred and seventy units here. When's the last time you drove down that street to the light? And how many times that light changed before you left? What's going to happen when you have two hundred and thirty more units right there? So that's the other thought. And the other thought, and I always bring this one up because I think it's very important, why did we put the stop signs out there by the town hall? Does anybody know why? I was at that meeting. A friend of mine, here and a friend, elderly women, would go to my sister and I a couple of times a week, that was their social time. One would pick up the other, they'd go there. This particular morning, they couldn't find a parking place on that side of the street, so they went and parked in front of the church. They come across that side, there was no problem, they cross the Common, they get into the sidewalk, they look, it's clear, they start walking out into the street. A car comes whipping around the corner. She said, if I put my hand out like this, I would have hit the car. He never even slowed down, he kept going. That's part one. Now, they go to the senior center after they've done their breakfast, and they're telling people at the senior center, and the people at the senior center said, what the heck were you even doing down there? We don't go there anymore for that same reason. Okay, so I presented that to the safety board, and they all kicked it around and they said, and they said, well, what, what are we going to do? I said, number one, put some signs up. But what's more important, enforce it. Now, I'm going to give you an example. The day that we put the, they put the flag up, you know what I'm talking about? For the, uh.
Right, flag.
Right, right. Myself and another person were standing on this side, facing that stop sign. Seventeen vehicles, including three big trucks, never stopped at that sign in that period of time that we were there. Okay. There's a reason for it, but I'm not going to bring it up today.
Frank, Frank, I, I, I agree with you that safety of the downtown is an issue, but it's not a hindrance to developing the downtown. They're two separate issues, every community is dealing with the same thing. Generationally, just now, as a society in general, we're impatient. That has changed the way people drive their cars, everyone's on their phone and everyone's.
Well, I, I have to, I have to disagree with you, because I had a conversation with the chief at that meeting with that woman, okay? And it's on tape, and what he said blew me away, and I'm not even going to repeat it tonight.
Doesn't seem like the police department is going to be enforcing.
All right, then I'll tell you what he said.
No, we might.
Well, they, I mean, I can tell you, just, and I don't want to get off track, but I can tell you that, um, you know, in my experience, you know, I told somebody today, I look out the window all the time, and then I thought, well, that doesn't sound good either. But, you know, I do look out the window from my office and from the outer office, and, you know, the unmarked cars, very often, most of the time, you don't know that they're there. And they are there, um, and they do pull, pull people over constantly. But I think the Matt's point is, it doesn't matter, I mean, it is, that's.
The volume.
It's the volume, but it's also, you know, and I pulled this up, you know, if we want to talk about this, it's also the configuration. You know, it is, that's a straight shot, you know, when you're coming off Bedford Street or when you're whipping around the Common. So the Common traffic is way too fast, that's, we all know that. But the, the configurations just invite people to bolt, you know, accelerate as, as much as you can, especially when you're coming up, you know, onto South Street, coming up the west side of the Common, and you're, you're accelerating onto South Street, people open it up. And the same thing here, you know, people, people have sightlines over here, and if they don't see anybody, they just fly right through that, that stop sign.
And I, I think as we're talking about, you know, as we try to develop the downtown, particularly with the private partners, that we could do things to Frank's point, like, I've, I've been in communities where all of the, the crosswalks are raised speed tables. So, uh, they're not as abrasive as a speed bump, but it, it forces you to slow down for the crosswalk. Uh, crosswalks where the LED sign, it, lightage, lighting is like into, embedded in the road, but I think there's, again, separate issues, I think there's, yes, there's a safety issue downtown for sure, but it's handling a volume of traffic that it can't keep up with, which goes back to the point of mixed use. And, and that's having people who live and, you know, socialize downtown without the need of a vehicle. So that's important as we talk about the conversation, and I've kind of even in my own mind shifted away from to Dennis's point, the downtown. I think the downtown, being Central Square, it, it is, there's not much to be done. I see opportunity going down Broad Street, as we've mentioned, Spring Street and Hale Street, and tying that back into BSU, and I think there's a ton of opportunity and property that can be helped, and, and part of that is, you know, to Frank's point, just as we develop that and think about improving the sidewalks, as we talked about either before, the cosmetic stuff. Maybe we throw a few speed tables in that don't affect tractor trailers as badly, but, you know, at least it's. Maybe we throw a few speed tables in that don't affect tractor trailers as badly, but, you know, at least it slows down the traffic.
I tried to have speed tables, but several places, prior highway department object. You don't like to plow over, you don't like to plow over. I find that's not a problem in other communities, but ours, so we have to find a way to mentally get past that and figure out if that's the right answer, how are we going to do?
Who decides that?
That's, and that, so that's, that's, you know, we we can put speed tables in, but, you know, we're not going to do it. Well, let me back up, some of the proponents of speed tables think that that's going to really solve the problem of speeding on their street. Invariably, especially in a college town, what happens is speed tables are used to see how much air you can get flying over them, number one. And it also actually creates more noise, because you're slowed down to go over the speed table, and then you gun it. And, you know, at night, if it's a truck, or, you know, some of these mufflers or motorcycles that that, you know, have modified mufflers, you know, you've you've, you know, created a a noise problem. So it is, it is an issue, an issue for for plowing, especially when we're, you know, they're desperate to try to get contract plowing. But it's not, you know, that's not, that shouldn't be the barrier to a discussion about putting speed tables in. But I think very often, and I know neighborhoods, I know streets where they put them in, and then, you know, a year later, magically, they just come out, because, you know,
Even if it's not, even if it's not speed tables, I mean, I I think what Matt is saying, to Frank's other point, when we say, when we find that it's hard to put in a mixed use thing because of traffic, we shouldn't say, okay, it's done, we should say, okay, the next problem is how do we fix traffic? And can't do that, and we have to fix speeding, okay, the next problem is how do we fix speeding? Like, like, our our role in this, I think, is to remove those impediments, right? In a way that aligns with community needs and stuff. But we can't, we can't let them stop us. Which I think they are.
So so that's a good segue into sort of just a a brief discussion. And I meant to start out by saying, we're going to try to try to stick to time, because I know everybody's got other things to do. And I don't want to, I don't want to prolong this, we can always come back and do more workshop sessions, which I think are really productive. But it's a good segue into, you know, traffic configuration. So we had, this is, can we see that, Pete? So we've had the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen downtown revitalization study, took a look at traffic reconfiguration. This was very conceptual plan. So it had didn't go through really any engineering review, but it was a conceptual plan, which is fine. The the twenty twenty, last year's McMahon study, wh- which looked at a whole bunch of different bad spots around town. Also picked up on this, we asked them to review three options for the the common and the circulation pattern. One was this, which is reflects two-way traffic on the east side, and then less impactful park, basically parking areas on the on the west side. We also asked them to look at the opposite, parking on the east side and two-way traffic on the west side. And then we asked them to look at at just leaving it the way it is, and what improvements could we make to make it safer? So so they looked at all that, their recommendation to us, and then and then staff and, you know, highway, police, fire, engineer, all all agreed on a staff level that this was a preferred option, which is, again, two-way traffic on the east side, which is the BSU side, less impactful parking and and, you know, maybe raised, you know, raised brick or what have you on the west side. And so we wanted to kind of, in order, let me give you a little bit of the how this project, these types of projects come to fruition. So doing something like this is obviously a multimillion dollar proposition. So you start with a concept. We look at the concept, we buy into that concept, and at that point, then we commission an engineer to come and do something that resembles what an actual plan would look like. The engineer, obviously, traffic engineers know turn radiuses, they know, you know, light cycles, they can plan all that stuff. They know the parking dimensions, they know optimal, you know, styles of parking, whether it's parallel or diagonal, what have you.
There's all this modeling software they run through.
Exactly, so they, so they then, you know, create a plan with dimensions and elevations and all of that. And then based on, I think it's like a twenty-five percent plan or something like that, they come back and they say, okay, this is good. And we kick that around, we might make some tweaks or changes. And then then they keep building towards, you know, sixty-five percent design, and then they build towards ninety percent design. And the whole while, we work with Mass DOT to make sure that whatever we are planning, Mass DOT is going to be in agreement with. For two reasons, one, they really do have to agree, these are state numbered roads. And two, we want to get funding, a significant amount of funding from Mass DOT. So so we're at the point now where I'm ready to come to the council and request the engineering money for something. So I don't want to get the money from the council and then put the engineer off on a path that ends up not being a path that, you know, you all are are
Can you can you just kind of just explain what's happening there?
Sure.
I think I have an idea.
And again, this is, this is very conceptual, so, you know, as during the engineering phase, a lot of this will change. But the concept is, here, the academy building is right here, obviously, School Street, the fire station right now, Old Town Hall, common, obviously. So right now, you've got two-way traffic on Bedford. And it turns into one way on the east side of Central Square and comes down, you can curve off this way onto Summer, or you can come down here to the light. So what this plan, and then obviously the other way, you know, your Main Street broad, or Summer, you're turning onto the common, and you're going on the west side down South Street.
How do you come from Summer, now on the east side? You go from Summer
Right now, or in this plan?
I think you're explaining what is happening right now.
Yeah, no, that's, so that's what happens right now. So on this plan, conceptually, we we take one side of the common and we we turn it into two-way traffic. Now, that does a number of things, but most importantly, it calms traffic right down. So, you know, this this freeway that you have on both sides of the common is now gone. And you've got, you know, you've got two-way traffic, so naturally, in two-way traffic, you're calmed down, you know, you don't open it up, because the car in front of you is calmed down.
And no parking on the east side?
So this particular plan, correct, no parking on this side. So, so that's traffic. So then you push, you know, parking up here, they show parallel parking on both sides here, and then they show two-way sort of low-impact traffic to get to the parking. And my guess is during an engineering process, you have a suggestion to make that a one-way somehow, and either do diagonal parking or parallel on one side, diagonal on the other. But keep it, keep it, you know, try to keep it a one-way, and I don't know which way they would suggest. But but again, this is conceptual. So that's that, that's essentially what's going on.
Does School Street become two-way, or does it maintain its
So here, it would be two-way.
Okay.
So right now, it's kind of quasi-two-way.
Right.
You know, it's two-way for those that know, are like
If you go into the fire station, it's two-way.
Yeah. So once the fire station leaves that location, you know, it resolves a lot of things with this whole intersection. I mean, right now, they they go against traffic to come out onto South Street. They'll go against traffic to go down Bedford. So once the fire station's gone, we won't have that issue. But they show, they show it as two-way, it doesn't have to be right there. You know, again, that's what an engineer would would, you know, once they dig into it, they they do traffic counts, current traffic counts everywhere, and then start to design around around the traffic.
Well, someone coming from South Street might take School Street to avoid, you know, instead of taking the left, instead of going out or going right down School, you know, down Plymouth Street that way.
True. So this would, you know, this would, this particular concept would involve a new light at this intersection, because you're teeing off South Street into Bedford Central Square. So you're making a four-way intersection here that would be
So the raised pedestrian plaza on the west side, how do I get in there? I want to go in there and park, what do I do?
Right now, you, if you're coming up this side of Central Square, you go right in like that.
So it's one way this way?
Well
You can't come out with the other end, you can't.
Yeah, you can come out down here.
So what's to prevent people from using that as a cut-through?
It would be, it would be so awkward to be going, you know, in there, you know, you're you're dealing with people pulling out.
They're tighter turns, it just
Yeah.
Pass more resistance.
Yeah, so there really wouldn't be an incentive to try to, you know, avoid this by going up here.
In the traffic study, I want to say it was down Bedford Street. The first road coming out had a lot of accidents.
Grove.
Yeah. And so I'm wondering, in this model, I would imagine you would have cars backing up on Bedford, waiting to come into the common area. And those people in the side streets would be inching out through that, like doing the peek around, hoping there's not a car coming the other way. So if we do have a study, it would be great, maybe if we could just extend it to include that intersection.
We did.
Okay.
We did, and that that intersection They didn't, well, that was the, that was like the worst case. That was the least the lowest option. So that was the the one that, but Grove, there were a couple of suggestions there. One was to do change the direction of Grove Street. At least that section, make it one-way in instead of, but again, that, you know, it sounds easy, because it sounds like you're going to solve the problem of crashes at that intersection. But that potentially creates a whole ripple effect with traffic, you know, trying to get out of the university in other ways. It puts a lot more traffic on Maple, for example, or
But in what you're describing, to to pay for an engineer to come look at this, would that would be included in the stuff they're looking at as well?
I I think it, once we hire the engineer, I think we have to look at a slightly broader, yeah, I think it goes down to there. So the state highway is right about here. It it, state is responsible for all of this, and then the town is responsible for this down to the outside of town. So so whatever we do at Grove needs state buy-in. So we know that the state is is fined with, you know, some traffic calming measures, you know, bump out the, state is actually fine with creating street parking along here on one side or both, I can't remember how, what the width of that Bedford is at that point. But they're fine with that, which actually helps us, because it helps the academy building accommodate parking, quite frankly.
Yeah, and it really does calm traffic down. You've got a wide, if you've got a twenty-foot width, and your car's at eleven feet, it can go a lot faster than if you've got twelve feet.
Exactly, and if you do, you know, if you create bump outs, you know, bump outs aren't just pretty, I mean, they they're actually a traffic calming measure. So if you create that bump out, and then you allow parking along here, all of a sudden, you know, the people are going fifty, flow right down, you know? Because people don't, quite frankly, people don't pay attention to any of the traffic, speed limits, anywhere. So so you you, the way we deal with that is we create a traffic calming measures that force people to slow down.
So you, we didn't really answer Pete's question, which was, if there's a fifty-foot, fifty-foot, fifty-three-foot trailer coming up South on Summer Street, or Plymouth Street, Summer Street, how is it getting over to Bedford Street?
Yeah, and that's and that's what the traffic engineer, that it, those are, that's the next step. I mean, that's, if we say this is our concept, and this is what we want to have work, the traffic engineer has to make that work. Because we can't not accommodate the traffic that that comes through Central Square. And unfortunately, we can't ban, you know, ban fifty-three-foot trailers from going through Central Square.
It seems like opening up School Street to way traffic would take a lot of pressure off the east side of
Until you get to the end, until you get to the end of School Street.
Yeah.
And then you're you're right on BSU's campus.
I know that's no problem.
The other, you mean down the other end?
Yeah, which is a problem in itself. I, you know, I'm I was a fan of reconfiguring the traffic, I'm starting to become less of a fan of it. I actually, and I'm just trying to look at some of the numbers, in in my mind, and this is going to sound crazy, and the business owners would probably lose their minds, is actually eliminate all of the parking on the common and shift it. For instance, on the east side, you could shift it to when the fire station moves, I think that could easily become municipal parking for additional miles. I don't know what you'd do on the west side, but I think if you eliminate the parking and keep, I think you're going to increase the safety, because people aren't darting in between cars, not going to make it great. It's going to open that up some more, so it'll be a little bit, from a visual perspective, a little bit better. But also, I think what Eric said too, is it make it, you can give you some flexibility where we eliminate, eliminate the parking, but give the business owners the ability to go out a little bit more like we've seen in some of the cities, on both sides, on both sides, not just, not just on one side, but on both sides. I just don't, on the west side, I don't know where you would be able to shift the parking. Because as we know, if the parking's across on the east side, people will not park in the east side and walk seventy-five yards to go to a business, they just won't do it. But on the flip side, parking in front of those businesses and backing out, you take your life in your hands. So I know we talked about making it instead of nose in parallel. I just, I don't, looking at that, I know that the engineer has to come in, but it was to Peter's point, that Summer Street turn, unless you're going to start chopping off some of the square there, which I don't think we can touch, nor would I want to, that's almost like a hairpin turn. What that, yeah, what that's going to do is, and we're seeing it in other areas, it's going to make the trucks find alternate routes. And now we're going to have issues in the neighborhoods of semis, tractor-trailers going through, because they're not going to come up here, they're going to go up Grove Street, or they're going to go down, you know, Summer Street, and try to come out farther and avoid all this. So now we have, you know, we fixed one thing, but we create something else. I I would try to keep the traffic pattern the same and not mess with that, but really increase the parking, the availability of the parking. But again, taking the parking off of the common, opening that up, but being able to shift all those spots. I mean, if, off the top of my head, on the west side, fifteen, I don't know the exact number, maybe fifteen or twenty spots, put, be able to put those on the west side, and I know it's mostly private property, but this, there's some lots in the back that we could approach and say, have some sort of dual agreement. And like I said, on the east side, move everything to the municipal lot, as well as opening up some additional spots. That would, that would, that would be my conceptual thought process to see how it looks. And we're not reconfiguring, we're not reconfiguring traffic, I I just think that's a bad idea, I really do.
So let me, let me ask you a question along those lines. Would you, so say we kept it the way it is, would you be willing or interested in shrinking the travel lane down to one lane? You know, right now, this is sort of a free-for-all here.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. And that, to me, is not changing the traffic pattern, it's, it is a free-for-all. I wouldn't have a problem with the one lane, because everyone can still access it. That one lane, I think, is good enough, to your point, you jockeying, and, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a, I personally wouldn't have a problem with that.
In your current configuration or a future?
No, current, moving it down to
So that makes sense, and we've talked about that before too, like tonight.
I didn't talk about it before, so it's my idea.
It's your idea.
Yeah.
It's your idea.
Thanks, Bill.
Sean's idea is a very practical idea, because
Yeah, they're very good too.
You find, you find a racetrack, like I had someone pass me on the left on the common tonight, because it's in the right-hand lane.
Well, and I can tell you, you know, I should just bring up the current configuration, but I can tell you that the the crosswalk that's right about in here, well, I guess it matches up here. This is, that's a disaster.
It is.
That is a disaster.
The other crosswalk down further is a disaster too, we have a light there.
Yeah.
Because it's, you got, you got two cars to the left, all the cars to the right as you face it, and Because it's, you got you got two cars to the left, all the cars to the right as you face it, and it's like Frogger. So. As much as people say there's enough parking downtown, I don't think there's enough safe parking, because once you get in there, you got to get out.
Mm-hmm, and especially if you're trying to pull out right here.
Exactly, on on both sides. So I, you know, something like that where we can, we can keep the pattern. Shift the parking, still make it accessible, make the west side into one lane. Um and then there's probably some other minor things. I like the light, I'm kind of a fan of the light versus the stop signs, but.
Like at this?
Yeah, but Eric had a good point, that you have traffic going all the way back to Grove Street, that that becomes a problem, but regardless.
You do in the morning now.
But it it's still, all right, six of one half dozen of the other.
So so you, if you were willing to shrink down to a a single lane, you you can push. So your point is you push some of these sidewalk spaces out, so you've got usable sidewalk space for the businesses.
And and for pedestrians.
Yep.
You know, I don't think.
Even shrinking down to one lane on the west side, you give someone an extra ten feet to be able to back out without risking giving hit.
If you keep parking.
Parking, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I see, I see what you mean. So yeah, if you pushed out ten, so Sean's saying just get rid of that parking, but but if you pushed out ten feet. You still, even if you kept parking and and it was a single lane, you still can.
But but you can't get rid of parking for like the juice mill and Restoration Coffee. They they, those customers have to have someplace right there.
Well, Bill, what I'm saying is we we move the parking, not get rid of it. That, and I I'm, I was looking at something in the back behind the businesses.
Right.
Is there the possibility of us being able to partner with the private owners? And put something back there so that the juice mill people stay, you know, on that side of the common. And uh the flower shop people stay on this side of the common. Because practical perspective and safety, it is a problem going across from one side to the other, you know.
But that problem will only get worse as you. Speed up the, how fast cars can go around. By removing that parking, cars are going to go faster around the common.
Not, but not if you, not if you're making it to one lane versus two.
It's one direction though, it's one direction.
It's one direction, but it you're also, you know, we've all, I've seen it too, is a lot of the cars that go barrel housing. Are ones where there's no other cars around and they've got all this space, so they come in. If you look at people in like downtown Boston. If they're they're in a small confined area, for the most part, not everyone, they're not gunning it to get through there because. They're afraid of hitting the curb or, you know, ruining the car, whatever the case may be. It it's not going to eliminate all the speeding because of people going to do it anyway.
But Sean, so with one lane, if we if we go with that idea. Uh would that one lane be able to still both take a left to go around the common? And bear to the right to go down South Street?
Yes.
But we would have traffic that would be.
Because it can split down there, Fred, it can split. Right.
At Church Street.
And right, right, uh, yeah, I guess that's Church Street, yeah. It can, it can split down there at church. If you're going north, at north on eighteen, north. Right by where the public parking is, that could, you could actually split that to go from one lane to two. You'd keep one lane in the square, so it would give you the ability to take a left to go around again.
Okay.
Or or take a lap to go up Main Street or keep going straight. But within, I'll say within the circle for the lack of a better term, those are all both sides on one lane. I would.
So Sean's going to work with the engineer to come back.
Well, they'll come, they'll come back and tell me I'm crazy.
You don't want two two-way traffic on the east side.
No, or or the west side, either side I don't want two-way, no, I don't want two-way traffic on the east side, right. I want the traffic pattern to stay the same.
Just just have one lane on the west side.
And the east side, both sides, one lane.
One.
Yep.
So we, there weren't.
That condenses things, that does condense things though.
Well, how do we get, I I mean, I I don't think, well, obviously we can't do anything with the common. It does condense it. But I also think by the condensing, it's going to slow traffic down. It's going to give more pedestrian room, it's going to give more room for businesses if they want to go out front.
Because you have two coming. North from Bedford into the common, and you have those two lanes there. Because most people are taking a left to, a left, they're bearing left on twenty-eight, heading to West Bridgewater, or they're going straight down to Broad Street.
Say that again, which which way you come from?
Right there.
Okay, yeah, no, I got you.
Now you have two lane, right now you have two lanes, so people, usually you're in the left lane to head towards West Bridgewater.
I got you.
Where they're going down Broad Street, they head towards East Bridgewater.
I got you.
Plaza.
Okay.
So if you have one lane.
Yeah, I I have one lane feeding into two lanes.
Okay.
That I don't get the virgins.
Yeah.
You've got a light that holds you up for two cycles, and sometimes cars are around the entire length of that.
Yeah.
Park around the other corner, and there's two or three changes, and you got to, you have a skip on that arrow.
But I also, but I also think this style, so that set of lights there, if you're sitting on Broad Street. And you've come over the tracks and you're trying to get into the common, that light is dictated by the traffic that's on the tracks. If you have this current configuration, you're actually allowing traffic to get through the common quicker. Because they're not getting held up by vehicles trying to park in this area. You follow me? So traffic going south on eighteen would actually get through the common quicker.
Right, but but the, I think Frank was saying that if you're coming north.
North up to Main Street.
If the Broad Street traffic is is on the track.
Yep.
There's not going to be a left turn signal until the 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 train track is clear.
I think it's two, well, it's it's two cycles, so so, you know, even if it backs up in those two cycles, at least you get. Every two cycles, you will get a left hand arrow.
But what I'm saying is. Stop to move through into the common.
Right.
If you're sitting in the spot that Frank's talking about, trying to go twenty-eight to West Bridgewater, you'll see the traffic. In that intersection stop trying to go south through the common. Because of vehicles pulling in and out of those businesses, it's so if it stayed the way it's designed in this plan. They're avoiding that and coming through, are they not?
Yeah, yeah, so you've, so you're not waiting, and and I agree with you in the morning especially, you know, you've got people get. Stopping in here to get their coffee and they're in and out, in and out, so so this traffic, you know, well, it comes up here. Uh has to back up, you know, while we wait for people to pull out, you know, see what you mean.
But if we get rid of the parking there, then you don't have the people waiting to come into it for people backing in and out. As it's configured today, as it's configured today. And and again, you know, and again, I can be on the sympathetic side of businesses saying. It's tough enough for parking, you're taking it away. We have to give them an alternative. Um and I wouldn't do it without an alternative, I don't have it yet, but we've got stuff by the bank, we've got. You know, we've we've got some very underutilized private property behind those buildings. There or even um if you're looking at the bank to the left, there's a lot, yep, there's a lot back there. There's even a lot farther to the left, that doesn't get a lot of use, it's all private property, I get. But that's an opportunity for us to approach to see if we can do something to give the businesses access to that.
But now, wouldn't that all have to be rezoned because you put parking on residential?
Okay, the the parkings, the the lots are already there.
Yeah, no, the lots are, yeah, the lots are already there.
Okay, they're already there, yeah.
And I don't think, I don't think anything on this side is residential until you get back.
Yeah, I'm not looking, I I'm not looking at taking any buildings, it's the parking that's behind those buildings that I would like to explore. Try to get the businesses access to, and I know there's some residential there, but.
So Michael, is is Summer Street, coming up Summer Street, can you take a left?
In this plan?
Yeah, this this plan.
Yeah, it's got a left hand.
It's got a left-hand turn, a light, and you're making, I think this is what Sean was talking about, the hairpin turn.
But if if people, if I'm coming from Summer Street and I want to go down South Street or Bedford Street.
Yeah.
I would use School Street. You would be coming, you'd be taking a left. You know what I mean, you'd come up that way from.
Yeah, but you'd have to, you'd have to take a left at the lights, go up, and then take a right onto School to go through.
Michael, can I ask a question?
If you're.
Straight through.
When this, when this was designed, did they evaluate the types of traffic that's downtown, like to the point, you know? We have Bridgewater sand and stone, obviously would have trouble coming off the highway. Getting through this configuration and also returning back to the highway to Sean's point earlier. Did they look at like exactly sort of like what is the traffic, or is it just traffic counts?
They, no, they they knew, they knew what types of traffic were coming through here, and and you know, you have um. You know, some of the crushed car, you know, trucks coming through, you've got, you know, sand and gravel. Um you know, there is a lot of truck truck traffic that comes through here, and that's by nature of, you know. The, it's a crossroads for all kinds of different, you know, roads to other places. Um it's state numbered highways that that come through here, twenty-eight and eighteen. Um and then one oh four, so it's it's, there's a lot going on here. And and so they knew the types of traffic, they acknowledged, you know, at the time, that this. They knew this didn't work in quotations because it was concept planned and they knew they had this issue. Um and and some other issues that that were in the conceptual plan, but that's, you know, that's what, that's what the engineering. Will give you is solutions to those issues.
Can I go back to how our original conversation started? We get on to this map, and I think we somewhat have gotten derailed now because my goal was. To come out of tonight with some actionable items of of consensus between all of us that, you know. Might some be some initial baby steps to move forward. I look at this as. Back to Dennis's early, early point that, you know, this is an isolated issue for downtown, and I don't really see that as a problem. Right now, yes, it needs improvement, but to me, our focus should shift on the Broad Street. And how do we get development and the potential of the Perkins site, what we're already talking about down there? So as a council, I I I think I would, I I want to hear from Jennifer to talk to. To understand the challenges that she's facing when these developers either ask questions. Whether she's able to provide that information, whether she understands whether or not the council would support her moving through with a project. And holding the hand of a developer who wants to do something, and what is our collective, you know, move movement downtown, but. I think, I I want to go back to just the the branding piece that's mentioned in that, and you know, we're talking, I hate to bring it back to the crosswalks and signage, but. You hear a lot of good ideas. Sean's talking about utilizing those those public lots, right, and and working with private developers. I don't have a lot of hopes for that, but there are some, you know, one of those Bridgewater savings that, you know, you probably could get that done. But if we develop the plan for branding of our downtown municipal and municipal private partnership lots. Like I'll tell you right now, most people in town don't realize that the lot at the end of Spring Street that backs up to the Hurricane is actually a municipal lot. That's saved for the town. You would not know that. You would not know if you were going to go to Krispy's that you don't have to park in the dirt. That you can park across the street in a paved lot. I think we could start with those baby steps. Let's do some better branding downtown. Let's talk to the college about maybe incorporating the signage design. They already have developed, or maybe we can flip them, so everything kind of looks uniform downtown. And I think we might actually attract businesses, or if Jennifer's meeting with a developer brings them downtown and they're seeing some. You know, we're already talking about the the bulbs or the bump outs, you know, we already have an opportunity that we're ready to move on, that we could. Maybe spend a little bit of money to improve that crosswalk to some of the ideas we've talked about. To really make them stand out downtown on Broad Street and on Main Street. And we have projects, I mean, I listened to the planning board the other night about right next to. Uh the bank on Main Street across from the credit union, you know, it's talking about putting commercial residential, that's what we want, right? I I thought, you know, mixed use, another great, I think Main Street is even a great space, particularly because the Housing Authority and what we're doing at the McHellaway School. Tying that whole sidewalk pedestrian traffic to downtown. So I don't know that maybe we're we've spent too much time on this, maybe we come back to it, but I would love to be able to leave here with like, what are we doing tonight when we leave? But I would, I would like to hear from Jennifer, just understand from her perspective, the challenges that she's facing. You know.
Is there, there a zoning, is there a zoning change that needs to be put forward for the Perkins Foundry property to go forward?
Yes.
What is that zoning? What what needs to be done?
In order for them to build a project as they presented to you, the back of their parcel is owned industrial. And then you can't do mixed use in industrial, so you need to rezone their entire parcel central business district. So it would be an extension of their existing part, part of their parcel into the back part of their parcel.
So does that have to come to the council to start the process?
Yeah.
And Dennis to that.
I'll, I'll, you write it up, I'll sponsor it.
Yeah, because beyond two hundred feet, it goes back to residential, which is now industrial.
Well, I think if you could, if you could propose something that needs to be done for that development to to go forward. Write it up, I'll sponsor it, so we can get the discussion going.
Well, I was hoping that this is kind of where the discussion would happen, where collectively coming, Michael and Jennifer, to say. We support the proposed idea, it's going to take zoning changes, and tonight. We don't have to come back to a council meeting where we argue this point out, this is where the discussion.
Sure.
We're centrally collectively focused on this project and the development of Perkins site with the proposal that's at hand. Um that that was my collective hope anyways.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I don't, I don't think, this isn't a setting in which we want to make a decision.
Right.
But I think that's, your point is exactly right, you know, what we're looking for from from you is just some direction.
Yeah.
So that's.
That's a start, right? The other thing too, I think, going back to to a simple thing is to what Eric brought up is. Maybe you could propose, Michael, something with a little bit of money. Um to decorate, not decorate, but clean up the downtown, maybe put some big potted. Uh.
Planters.
Planters in there for the spring, um you know, maybe that's a step to do still. Maybe we need to send letters to the business, to the, not the business owner, but the landowner, property owner. And ask them, do you work with us to, you know, clean, you know, put some fresh paint on if it needs, and so, but I know. Just Desserts lost their awnings, I don't know if they need, you know, if they're having trouble getting their awnings back up or what the deal is, you know, we. Say, hey, look, we see this awning laying on the side of the sidewalk there, what happened? Can we help you? Things like that, I think that, you know, what Eric said is a good start, you know, let's, you know.
So we we do have some, we have recommendations, I won't bring it up now because it's, we're just talking, but. Um, you know, we we have, we've got a lot of sign clutter in Central Square, way too much. Um so we, that's easy, those are easy fixes, so we can make it look much better by just decluttering with a lot of the signage that's there. To Eric's point, we can also, you know, do something funky with crosswalks if we want to try to, you know, sort of differentiate our downtown. You know, that that's possible. Um, we could also, you know, take a a small amount of money and appropriate it into some kind of loan program. Um for facade improvements for the the buildings that are downtown, um you know, grant, you know, give it to the the the.
Something like Title V, doing like deceptics. Revolving counter.
Yeah, well, a similar idea, yeah, yeah, similar idea, absolutely. Um, so those are the things we can do, and and Matt's point about um kind of branding. You know, we went through sort of an exercise to try to find a branding, you know, a brand that would work, but honestly, you know, BSU's got. A very specific brand, you know, if you want to piggyback off of that and and do something not exactly the same, but enough, similar enough. So that people feel like, you know, you're not walking from, you know, East Berlin to West Berlin, you know, when you go um. Across properties, you know, that's, I'm all for that. I mean, I think that's the kind of stuff that really does make. It's simple, and it makes you downtown a lot more just comfortable to be in.
Just that flagpole, Mike, we can just straighten out that flagpole, that's not that difficult, and we can all go out after this and just pull it, maybe straighten it out.
Contract keeps promising. Yeah.
You know, you know, it's like when you get a trim, when you, when you, when you get a trim, you you notice it better than if you get a full-fledged makeover.
Exactly.
So just the little things, people know, yeah, I get that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Would it be possible just to let Jennifer speak, and I'm just interested in the challenges that you're seeing. Um from the people who do call in interested in the town, is it a lack of direction from the council? Or there are other issues to towns in an identity crisis, my personal opinion, um from what I hear, but, you know, is there anything that you. Would need from us that could just give us an overview of the struggles that you're having?
Yeah, so I I think this is a good start. I think generally what I found is. I would agree that the town is in a little bit of an identity crisis, you've got, you know, groups of people who believe Bridgewater is one thing. You've got groups of people who believe Bridgewater should be something else, and, you know, those sort of voices don't. You've got groups of people who believe Bridgewater should be something else and, you know, those sort of voices don't ever sort of mesh. And so that's where some of the confusion comes in. So it's it's challenging for myself and my staff to sort of guide developers in development when we don't really know what we're guiding to, right? So, you know, we have zoning and we try to follow what the zoning is and if somebody comes and proposes a project, we bring that forward under the regulations, but then it gets to boards and committees that may have members on them that have a different view of how Bridgewater should be presented. It gets challenging. So my hope in talking with Michael, I think, was to sort of get the council as the chief elected officials to come up with sort of a consensus of what do we want Bridgewater to be, what we want it to look like in ten, twenty years so that when other boards and committees or other factions in town come to us and say, well, that's what we want, we can then go and say, well, go talk to your councillor because that's what they want, you know what I mean? Like, I think it's more of the support and like the the overarching, you know, goals, you know, Michael said that you guys are working on goals as a group. I was like, that's great because then I can then say, from my perspective, from my department, this is a council goal, I follow what their goals are. If you don't like it, you need to go talk to them. And then I'm not sort of hanging out there on my own, you know, so I think that's really my challenge. Um, and then just to sort of piggyback a little bit on the branding, we find Michael did mention, we did do a whole exercise, received a grant from the state to do branding. Right when I first got here, we hired an artist, he came in and did a whole big, huge branding exercise and that went right down the path. It was derailed, completely derailed. So, you know, we've tried several things and, you know, some things are just not sort of as welcomed as.
Why did it?
Yeah, what what derailed? I was on there.
Yeah, I mean.
It died.
It didn't get the support that we needed.
I mean, it wasn't well received. It wasn't well received because I I I didn't like the branding.
I, I, yeah, I didn't like the name. It was trying to change almost, not you, but the the presentation kind of changed the the whole um town seal. It didn't make too much sense.
Yeah, it changed the, we made it a logo.
Yeah, made it a logo. But, I mean, that's beside the, I mean, it just, I mean, there were several reasons why I did it. I mean, I'm happy to go through that exercise again and come back with something different and try, try again. That's perfectly fine, but um, I don't want everybody to think that we're not trying some of these things because we certainly are, but I mean, to answer your point, it was, it really is helpful to just have sort of a collective vision, right? You know, and I think I I've said, I've been here now three and a half years in Bridgewater and I've always said that I think Bridgewater is in an identity crisis in order to what you're saying. And I think once it figures out what it wants to be, then I can really do my job, so.
What um, what format does that opinion need to be in, just out of curiosity? So let's say we do it on a board, we all say we agree to it. Is that enough to actually remove the roadblocks? Or is there some statement we make or?
Oh, I think, you know, I think that's enough, but I think anything more than that is always also great too, you know, I think, you know, I think Matt mentioned earlier, a lot of conversations showing up at plenty more meetings, you know, supporting developers coming into plenty more meetings, talking to different board members who are regulatory boards and and telling them how you support the project and why it's good for the community. You know, they they hear me say those things, they hear Michael say those things, but Michael, I don't live here, you know, we just work here. So they don't always think that we know what we're doing or what's best for the community or whatever. So for you guys to say those things as the elected officials, as residents of the town, it may, would need more, I would think.
I would think it would be impactful if we collectively, not all, but a good chunk of councillors showed up to a planning board meeting when a project's on the table. I'm guilty of it myself, so I'm not pointing pointing fingers at all, but I think that that could show strong support coming from the council that you really want a project to move ahead.
And even if you can't come, because I know you're all busy and you're at work, but writing letters or emails, you know, we sort of put all that stuff into the record.
So one of the things that we changed, and this was after talking with Pat, the reason you saw the Perkins property in front of the council and they had a similar presentation in front of the planning board was because we want to get in front of the strategy. And we want to think about the branding or the changes around the neighborhood before we get into the functional aspect of, here's a zoning code change, let's talk for three minutes and vote. We wanted to see what they were thinking and then see if it fits into what we were thinking, e- even though we didn't really have a a thought around what, you know, the the whole concept of prosperity, which is part of why we're here, right? You know, does it make sense to add yet another hundred fifty apartments, you know, uh, and not, and take away from business, things like that, you know? So that's why they were presenting. And I'd like to see that more often because it gives you a chance to see what what's in the, what's in the thought pattern of the developer and and how are they going to fit their piece into the the puzzle that's Bridgewater? And that's how you make it so that it doesn't have an identity crisis. You said, this is our identity. This is what our puzzle looks like. Let's see how your puzzle, your piece fits into.
So going back to Eric, was your question about sort of that globally or was it more specific to the the branding signage effort?
Um, more globally, but but I think it probably applies to the signage too. So I think, I mean, one way is we all show up. You might get the same hidden, you might not, right? I think depending on the project. I think the other way is we figure out some mechanism to have a conversation like this ahead of it. And as a committee or as a, as a group, we we present a majority opinion, I don't, I don't know, whatever it is. Um, but that's, that's more what I was thinking because I, I mean, I think we do have different opinions and that's a positive thing. And so I think, um, you know, giving us a forum to talk that through so that we can then share kind of the output might make sense as well.
Yeah, we'll definitely do do more of these and I think they're valuable just for that reason. Um, and if I could, I I know we're over time, but if if we could go back to um specifically the branding, because I think that's, that is something that's really easy that we can right, kick right off um and do it. Um, so if we came back to you and we said, look, here's something that sort of mimics Bridgewater State's design, but isn't Bridgewater State, because we're not Bridgewater State, would that, you know, would that be a direction that you think we could go in reasonably? Or do you think there, or do some people feel like, no, we should be completely separate?
We have this in the report, you know, that looked very similar to the style that Bridgewater is using with the black poles supporting signage, but it's completely different because it's not the same colors as the town seal. But if we could use this branding to identify the municipal lots and have it consistent throughout downtown, I think it would be a really good start. As well as.
Well, we can back it up. I I'm of the opinion of just go, like, I mean, I think we could spend months trying to figure out the best one. Or we could just go and learn.
Well, it's it's timely because um, you know, we're we're about to put a bunch of effort into styles and heart and then if that works, then we're going to expand out to the other parks. And so what we were adamant about is that we want to create a a standard, a signage standard that's universal throughout all our parks. So so that if we can get to the point where we're doing it all over town, then that's all the better.
I I like it. And I think we could throw in the litter stuff too. I mean, I think we could do a lot with a presence like that.
Okay.
Which one's that one that you just had?
That's the twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen. Can we also, I I think, you know, Sean's got a lot of excellent points about the uh off-street parking, private business and shared parking. So I I don't have an idea, but I'm wondering if other communities have used uh some sort of incentive to have the private business owners give up part of their parking, such as a tax incentive or something else. I know from my discussions on uh behind um, behind uh uh Wal- Walgreens, there's liability issues. And so, you know, so the God Chalk's building has parking behind it and he has made some accommodations for other parking. But you can't just have someone that's going to wander off to a bar, park in your parking lot and then come back and something happens. There's liability. And so that has to be part of the solution. How do you, how do you create, you know, indemnify the uh the private part, parking? How do you give them an incentive to to um, when it's not full, to allow, you know, the community to use the parking? So for some time in the future, I'd like to see if there's other plans already in place for other communities.
Okay, let's, we can do that.
And even if someone could go out and collect that list of things that we've heard from our local owners, like, what are the things we need to think through?
But there is one owner there, Bill.
No, it's multiple.
No.
What's the?
The the, where the Walgreens is?
So Walgreens, again, I've had conversations about this. Walgreens is set up as a co-op. So the co-op has a certain number of spaces allocated to each property. So you can't just go in and say, can I have a hundred spaces? We've, we've started down this road. I don't know where it's going.
Mike, but all right, I'm I'm unclear on one thing. Isn't the whole parcel owned by, owned by one person, like flatly or no?
Uh, my recollection is it's got multiple owners and then the parking is is a, is like Bill said, I think it's a cooperative of the conduct.
So it's not like, it's not like Roche Brothers where that that's owned by one company.
What I, what I wanted to see happen, I mean, we got nowhere, so I'll talk about it. So what I wanted to see happen was that a portion of that become a shared lot. You can go in anytime of day, anytime of year, you'll find at least twenty percent of the lot empty. So Summer Street Cafe has a a pet, a big problem with parking and they're sharing with the bank. What I'd like to see is if we could get shared parking and convince uh the bank to take down their fencing and make that uniform parking. So yeah, the bank has plenty of parking, Walgreens has plenty of parking, and there's now access to Summer Street Cafe and the hundred, hundred seat.
I think that, I think that could work. I think, I hopefully it would work. I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the church in the common, the the one next to Juice Mill, they have no parking lot.
No, it's the library.
I'm just saying, they've survived how many hundred and fifty years?
Parking in the library. Not too many people come to the library at eleven o'clock on Sunday morning.
But they have other, I'm saying, they they have other things there or weddings and things, funerals and things like that where they've gotten through a hundred and fifty years of having a church there without having the need of a parking lot.
Right.
Go back to Horseman.
Makes traffic through the common much easier.
The Horseman Buggy used to stay on the common and they went to the church.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but we have to approve also. So let's say someone's going to a wedding and parks on the common. Trivia con- trivia contest, how long can you park in a space on the common?
One hour. Depends, depends where you park.
It is a sign.
You're just on.
No, I think the, I think the common configuration uh thing, Mike, I think certainly warrants more discussion.
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll bring that back. I mean, I did, I just wanted to sort of get some sense um, as to whether we wanted to do any kind of changes. And I think I got the idea that we definitely do want to do some changes. We're not yet on the same page about what we want to do. So so that's fine. Um, so I don't, uh, I don't, you know, we've over uh extended our time, so I don't want to um, go on much more, but I didn't know if anybody had any final thoughts. We'll do that. We will come back to this again um in different iterations. And, you know, I think you've given us some direction on some pieces, certainly that that, those low hanging fruit pieces and we can start doing that. Um, but we'll, we'll come back to you on some of the major decision points and and probably in this kind of setting and just try to revisit and get some consensus before we can plow ahead with, you know, legislation.
Does it make sense to make something like this a standing meeting for a while? You know, like every two months, we do it and we'll pick an agenda?
Um, that's, you know, I talked to Matt a little bit a while back about that and I I think that probably does make sense. Um, we can talk a little bit about whether it makes sense to devote this kind of evening to it or if it makes sense to, you know, every couple of months or every quarter, we do, you know, an hour before the council meeting starts and we do it in worship setting, but we can, we can talk about that.
Great.
It's helpful.
So are you going to look into engineering? For the, for the common? Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at it. I'm not gonna pull the trigger yet until we come back and have.
Yeah.
Some.
Investigate costs and stuff.
What that cost.
Saturday.
Back tomorrow.
Saturday.
Hey, if you want to be back here tomorrow, I'm all for it. Um, so uh, I know it's kind of warm in here in case anybody didn't notice. Um, so the AC is getting replaced, but we uh are waiting on a huge backlog. It's a supply chain uh issues. I just waited, we, so, look at this. Fortunately, the weather's going good. All right, anybody, any last thoughts?
Was this helpful?
Yes.
Yes. I think there's no other opportunity to have debate. Our agendas are packed. I think these are really.
So tomorrow, I'm going to go to Jennifer and say, what'd they want us to do?
Paint the sidewalks. Straighten out the flagpole, paint the sidewalks.
Sign.
Yeah.
All right.
And crosswalks into three D bricks.
I just, I want to say, if anybody in the interim wants to reach out to me to have a conversation about this stuff, I'm, I'm always open to hopefully.
Absolutely.
Only on Saturdays.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Once you, once you stop meeting.
I mean, it just shows that somebody cares. I just saw.
Yeah, once you stop meeting and stop recording.
Yeah, it's not like it used to be.
So it turns out the red sauce wasn't a dressing, it was hot sauce that I had put on myself. Did you jump out and go?
You're on Phil.
So you uh, President, this way, um, she would, she's.
Agreed.
It wants me to assign a new host.
But you didn't, you didn't close the meeting.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Interrupt me for a second. Yes. Okay, a regular spot?
No, you didn't. I'm still here.
Oh, wait a minute.
Go up to the.